Joseph.
I might have to book it out right after I heal because I have an infirmary at my house.
Yeah.
It's, uh...
I haven't been there in a while.
Exactly.
Actually, you're a little fast.
No, that one's off. It's...
If you want.
You got six fifty.
Call me in on the end of it.
Six fifty.
Yeah, no, it usually goes by his phone because then he hears, "Bing, Bing," he has a alarm. Yeah, seven o'clock. Yeah, seven o'clock.
I'll wait for us to back into the sit down.
Joseph? That's what I just said. His clocks are off for a few minutes. One minute and two minutes there.
She's on a business trip.
Business trip and...
You're good.
Is Anthony all right?
Oh, seven.
He's got the fever.
He had allergies, but now he has the fever. Mayor's not feeling very well.
Corona virus.
Yeah. It's going around.
No COVID-19.
Yeah, go ahead.
Jesus. Right down the park.
Okay. Council meetings come to order. Can everybody stand for the salute of the flag? Mr. Ron Yetko, would you please lead us in our salute?
Thank you. Hand over your heart or military salute as appropriate. Our president...
Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, Mr. Yetko. Thank you. Um, may I, may I please have the clerk read the statement of public notice?
Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA 10:4-8 and NJSA 10:4-10 as follows. The notice of the meeting was promptly posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey on January 9th, 2020. A copy of the notice was mailed to the North Jersey Herald and News and the Record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the office of the township clerk on said date.
Ms. Kraus, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Coardner?
President.
Councilmember Kawati?
President.
Councilmember Seber?
Councilmember Vanchery?
President.
Council President Scobah.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes? Mrs. Kraus, can I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Coardner?
Sorry, I need a second.
A second.
Councilmember Coardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Kawati?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Okay, for reports, Councilman Kawati, can I have your report?
Yes, thank you. Just want to remind everyone that the Green Fair is happening on April 18th this year. We're going to have several vendors come in talking about ways that you can help to improve the environment. We have a, we have quite a slate lined up. It's actually much too long to mention now, but we are getting participation from some of the vendors who were there last year and some additional ones. In addition to that, we will be starting our farmer's market on that date. So the first event will be combined. On April 18th, there will be a, the Green Fair inside at the rec center and then the farmer's market outside on the field. So we're looking forward to that. And we have tentatively scheduled our first town cleanup for this year for May 16th, which is a Saturday morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kawati. Councilman Vanchery?
Sure, thanks. All right, just some top line updates. We've got a number of different events that are taking place over the next couple of months. I just want to give people a heads up about. At our next council meeting on Monday, March 9th, we're going to have about 60 to maybe 100 of the girls here to recognize National Girl Scouts Day, which is taking place on March 12th. So we may have a little bit of outside activities in the rotunda at one point and then coming in here for our regular meetings. So just to give my colleagues a heads up, working with the Girl Scouts on that. And then last week, I had a chance to meet with a number of residents who are families that have children that have been diagnosed with autism. We're looking to put together some activities that are going to take place in April for Autism Awareness Month. And what we're going to do is at the March 23rd meeting, since our first April meeting isn't until the middle of the month, we're going to have some of the families come in for a proclamation. We're also going to have them come a little earlier to meet with the mayor. And in addition, we are going to have the lights outside to be lit for blue. We're going to do that for the month of April as well, but we wanted to do that on the 23rd for the event that's going to take place here at our meeting. So a few things coming along. As I mentioned previously, from the Memorial Day Parade standpoint, we're working on the details around the parade as well as the concert and the night before, looking to start pulling together my committee probably sometime next month where we'll get together and start mapping out our plan like we typically do. From a transportation standpoint, we're meeting this week, our committee getting together. I'm also still working with the mayor as well as our engineer to schedule a number of different town halls that we're going to have. As I previously mentioned, we're looking to address the speed humps that are going to be on Jacobus and Van Pelt. Then we're also looking to speak with some of the residents about the new three-way and four-way stop signs we're looking to implement as well. Lastly, I did want to mention that this past Saturday, the mayor, myself, and the rest of the council, including Council President Scobah as well as Councilwoman Seber, we attended the Little Falls PBA 346 Annual Beef Steak, which was also a retirement dinner for Lieutenant James Minella, who just previously, recently retired at the end of last year. And just wanted to let everybody know, it was a nice event to recognize Lieutenant Minella for his work. And he received a number of citations and proclamations, including one from the mayor and council, as well as Congresswoman Sherrill, the freeholders, including TJ Bess and Bruce James were there. Assembly members DePhillips and Rooney also presented a proclamation along with Senator Carrato. So it was a nice way to thank Lieutenant Minella for his years of service with Little Falls Police Department. And then one other note too is next month, on March 16th, at Sage Valley High School at 6:00 PM, we're going to be holding a promotion ceremony for a number of our officers that are moving to the rank of sergeant as well as one for lieutenant. So it's welcome to all residents and hopefully that a number of you can come out and support what's going on in the police department. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman Vanchery. I'd like to add my congratulations to Lieutenant Minella on his retirement and to add my thanks and appreciation for his 29 years of service to the township of Little Falls and our really great police department. In reference to the senior advisory board, we will be having our dessert and dancing on March 13th. We're really excited about it. Our last two dinner and dancing events really had big turnouts. It's a lot of fun. The seniors really love it and they're looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to it. And on March 18th, we'll be having our monthly luncheon learn. And this time, we're going to be having an attorney, Naomi Collier, who is, her expertise is on elder law. And it'll be about estates and estate planning and wills. And we're also expecting a big turnout for that. The luncheon learns have really become very popular and we're looking to expand upon this in the months to come. We will be planning, as I check with the mayor, on a ribbon cutting for our wonderful senior bus. We're very excited about that and so we'll have a little ceremony along with that. I've just sent out a notice for our first meeting of the year for our Little Falls Open Space Committee for this Thursday. And we'll review not only what the town is doing in terms of grants on the town level, but also what our own Little Falls Open Space account is and what our plans are going forward. I think that wraps it up for the report. I will hand it over to the mayor for his report.
Thank you. Councilwoman, tonight we have the 2020 mayor's budget presentation. This is the brief presentation that we do, which we'll have the schedule up in a few minutes for the next two longer presentations that we will have a little bit later in the year. But this evening, and I'm going to preface this by saying that I'm going to apologize in advance to everyone. I'm going to be leaving as soon as I complete my presentation. I have an infirmary in my home. My wife and kids all have the flu, so I'm going to stay away from everyone here. I'm going to get back home to relieve her and my parents are there helping out right now. But I wanted to get through this presentation this evening before I head out and head home to take care of them at home. So that said, this is just going to be, as I said, the quick summary of the 2020 current fund and budget for this upcoming year. And we're going to highlight some of the features that are, you know, that are most outstanding about this year's budget. The first is that we have current appropriations of $9,593,164. We have a reserve for uncollected taxes of $950,000 this year. We have debt service of $2,158,000. Salaries representing $7,639,23. We have budget revenues of $7,251,389, which results in our amount to be raised by taxes this year of $13,136,98, which there, based upon the two numbers that you see, represents a budget a little over $20 million this year. And the 2020 budget is $381,164 under the tax levy cap and under the appropriations cap by $6,650,000. This year, we had some, we sustained some major losses to our assessed values in town. We had some tax appeals and we had some other lost properties due to a number of acquisitions and different things like that, which is always one of the most difficult parts to make up in a budget. And of course, we're always trying to increase our assessed values here in town. But unfortunately, between 2019 and 2020, we did see a slight decrease in our assessed value of the municipality. With that said, municipal taxes are projected for 2020 at .870 and the 2019 municipal actual taxes was .870, which I think will raise a lot of eyebrows. People see that being the same number in 2020 as it was in 2019. So what does that actually mean? That means that this year, there's going to be a zero tax change versus the 2019 rate for us here in Little Falls. That said, the 2020 average home in the township is now valued at $310,000. And as you saw on the last screen, municipal taxes for 2019 on the average home would be $2,697. In 2020, it's an identical number and that means that there will be no local increase in the municipal taxes in 2020 over the 2019 rate. In 2019, the fund balance was $2,826,515. The 2020 fund balance anticipated, it was $2 million. And the 2020 remaining is $826,215. And you can see those numbers are up much greater than they were in 18, where we had a fund balance of only $2,093,569. A 2019 fund balance anticipated of $1.4 million. And in 2019, we only ended up with $693,569 remaining. So you see there, and the general word that everybody uses is we have an increase in our surplus this year and our fund balance of about $800,000. And we were able to do that without having any tax increase to the municipality. So we essentially have more money in the bank without having any impact to the residents in town and requiring additional taxes. So we have, I think, good news for us here in Little Falls and I'm happy to share all this information this year. Again, these are, it's incredibly tough to manage all of the funds at once, but I think there's been a good job here in keeping a flat tax rate while increasing the surplus for the municipality. With that said, some other highlights. We had assessed values, as we indicated before, decreased by $629,400. And that's why I'm going to go back one slide real quick. And you see here the difference in the values of the remaining 826 this year over the 693 last year. We need to keep some extra money aside this year for, in the event we have, because of the decrease in values, as you see on this slide. With that said, library taxes are $554,000, skip too far ahead, $554,938 for 2020. And appropriations have been set to reflect salary increases in the Teamsters Bargaining Unit contract, as was previously agreed to. We have administrative salary increases set to reflect a 2.75% base increase. And we have public employees retirement system costs reflect cost per employee of $7,722. We have a change in administrative positions this year in the 2020 budget, where we're going to move a part-time administrative clerk to a full-time administrative clerk in the clerk's office. We also are going to be adding a part-time administrative clerk to the finance office. And we're going to be adding an additional fill-in senior bus driver and a new clean communities coordinator. Those are some of the things that the township has faced issues with in the past several years, one of them being not enough or adequate senior bus service for the seniors. So it's something that we were looking to address, as well as a new clean communities coordinator to assist with ensuring that our streets and roadways are free of debris and utilizing those funds that we have in our clean communities program to ensure that the town remains a clean place to be. Some other highlights are that the salaries for the police have been incorporated into the 2020 budget in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement at a 2.75% increase. And police and fire pension costs reflect a cost per officer of $30,380.70. We're going to continue with our vehicle acquisition program this year, where we're going to continue to purchase two new vehicles each year, as we have for a number of years. I think it's been a very effective program here in town. And rather than having years, again, where you buy no cars for two or three years in a row, then all of a sudden, you get hit with the purchase of a dozen vehicles at once, I think keeping this program where we have new vehicles coming in every year at a lower rate than we would if we had to buy a ton in bulk, has been effective for us and we want to continue with that. The township's also entered into a shared service arrangement with the borough of Elmwood Park this year for an EMS service to their community. What we did here is the budget will reflect expenses of $369,000 and they're going to be offset by revenues from Elmwood Park of $369,000. Of course, this is something where we hope to generate more revenues than the actual cost will be and we, but to be safe in our first year of our budget, we have that figure remaining flat across the board. You'll see there here that insurance costs are up $107,950 over last year. That's actually a fairly decent number for us. In prior years, we've seen $300,000 and $400,000 increases. So that was actually something that I was fairly happy to see this year, that the increase in insurance is just a little bit over $100,000 this year. We also have our Little Falls EMS program costs budgeted at $404,776, with offsetting revenues of $313,776, which has been the same numbers that we've been using and the same gap in the revenues and the expenses associated with our Little Falls EMS program. This was something that I was very supportive of when it was initially instituted here in town, where we now have full-time 24/7 coverage for our EMS. And the cost to run our volunteer program, where we were occasionally experiencing 45 to an hour wait time for an ambulance to respond because volunteers were just not readily accessible and able to respond. We now have sub-four-minute response times and the cost to the municipality is not $1 more than it was when we had volunteers who were unable to respond. So it's been a program that's been working very well for us. I think our ambulances and our crews have been doing an outstanding job. So we're going to continue with that and we're going to continue with the same estimated budgets and offsetting revenues. You also see here, as far as pension costs, the PFRS pension costs increased $56,421 and the PERS pension costs increased $14,894. And anyone wondering what those acronyms are, PFRS is the Police and Fireman's Retirement System Pension and PERS is the Public Employees Retirement System. So that's the difference between those two figures there. You also see in 2020, debt service costs are down from last year by $27,000. So we are experiencing a slight decrease in our debt service last year over, I'm sorry, this year over last year. Some final highlights are that the capital budget addresses the needs of the township's infrastructure and equipment requirements and, if authorized by the council, will reflect an increase in current debt of $2.7 million to the municipality. And I will be getting into far more detail in the March meetings. March 9th will be the budget, the official budget introduction. And on April 13th will be the public hearing and final adoption on the budget for the municipality in 2020. But again, I think one of the most important highlights that we have in here is that while we were able to increase the surplus to the municipality in 2020 over 2019 by almost $800,000, we'll also see no tax increase on the local portion to the municipality. So that's the, again, the brief presentation. I'll be getting into far more detail soon and I'm going to excuse myself and wish everyone a good night. And I'm sorry I'm leaving, but it is something that I have to tend to.
May I, may I please? No, sir. It's not open to public yet.
Mr. Wenzel, do you, thank you, Mayor, very much. And please feel better. Just hope your family feels better. Mr. Wenzel, do you have a report?
Nothing for tonight.
Can I have a motion and a second to open to the public hearing on the township's application to the Passaic County Open Space and Farmland Preservation Trust Fund for improvements to Wilmore Road Park?
So moved.
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor, is that correct? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Okay. Public hearing is now open. Anybody wishing to make a comment?
No, no, no.
No, this is just on, go ahead, Mr. Wenzel.
This is a required public hearing with regard to the use of open space apartment preservation funds from the state, by the township for improvements to Wilmore Road Park. So any comments will be only related to that issue. We'll have general comments later, but it's only on the use of the funds for Wilmore Park Road.
The funds are a grant.
Andrew Baggett, 78 Franklin Road, Denville. My Little Falls interest is 105 and 107 Main Street between Center and Stevens. How much are we talking about?
So this is actually a grant application to the county. The whole, I don't have the, I'll get back to it, the specifics, Mr. Baggett. $650,000. So every year, the county puts forth grant opportunities. Every year, Little Falls has been very blessed with getting a significant amount of money. So this year, the grant application is to expand and upgrade our Wilmore Road Park. That's probably our heaviest utilized park. Residents love it. It's time to expand it, so we're going to make it bigger. We are going to upgrade some of the equipment. We're going to be, many parks now have one area for toddlers to, say, five-year-olds and another area for like six-years-olds to 12-year-olds. And this way, you have appropriate equipment for that age group. There will also be more for handicap children in order to be able to use some of the equipment. We'll be adding an area with more seating and picnic tables and some coverage. And I think it's just going to be wonderful for our town. And this is a project that is not once and done. It'll happen over several years. We're also looking to upgrade where we have all of our events in Wilmore Park. Right now, we have a lovely gazebo. I'm not sure how old it is. But now, we're also looking to put a band shell there so that when we have wonderful concerts that ABC does for us, that the musicians and the entertainers will be able to be in the band shell. And it'll be much better for their equipment. We can get more different entertainers to come. We have a lot of events that we do there. We've already upgraded our microphones and our sound system. So that's basically what this is. So we're asking the county for $650,000. All of the paperwork is going to be submitted by the deadline, once we vote on it here at council. And then we'll find out, I believe, in October. There'll be several hearings also, if you want to attend a hearing by the county, that will be publicized as they go over, you know, all of the applications.
Good job, thank you. Good luck getting the grant.
Yes, I wish us all luck. It's very important.
Louis Fernandez, 54 Harrison Street. So you're, let me see if I get this correct. You're going to be asking the Passaic County for $653,000.
And a grant.
Grant. So the township will have zero, no?
You have to, so in...
So why don't you clarify what, how much money is coming out of the open space program?
It will, it will depend, Mr. Fernandez, on what grant we receive and the parameters of the grant.
Imagine you get the $653,000.
It could be anything from 50% match to 25% match. There's always a match on these grants.
But there will be some money coming out of the Little Falls Open Space.
Of course.
Right now, you don't know the amount.
I don't know yet.
Seeing no one else come forward, I will close to public comments. Can I have a motion to close to public comments?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion is carried. Can I have a motion and a second to open the meeting to the public for agenda items only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion is carried. Would you like to read?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. Please give an amendment address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However appropriate, it may be granted additional time under sole discretion of the Council President.
Agenda items only.
Agenda items only.
Agenda, yeah. It's just the agenda at this point. So there's two sessions, so you know, yeah.
All right, one.
Thank you, Mr. Wenzel. Okay. Any...
Sorry. So, I'm sorry, sir. This is for agenda items only. There'll be another public comment opportunity at the end of the meeting. Thank you for your understanding. Anybody wishing to come forward on agenda items? Seeing no one come forward, do I hear a motion to close to the public?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Okay, motion is carried. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? May I have a roll call vote?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Coordinator?
Yes.
Councilmember Kawati?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus, will you read Ordinance 1378?
Introduction of Ordinance Number 1378 and an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, Amending Chapter 86 Flood Damage Prevention of the Code," with a second reading in public hearing scheduled for March 23rd, 2020.
Can I have a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance 1378? Mrs., I'm sorry, motion.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Kraus, may I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Coordinator?
Yes.
Councilmember Kawati?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus, can you please read Ordinance 1379?
Introduction of Ordinance Number 1379 and an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, Amending Chapter 71 Fees, Recreation Fees of the Code," with a second reading in public hearing scheduled for March 23rd, 2020.
Can I have a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance 1378? Mrs., I'm sorry, motion.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Kraus, may I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Coordinator?
Yes.
Councilmember Kawati?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus, can you please read Ordinance 1379?
Introduction of Ordinance Number 1379 and an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, Amending Chapter 71 Fees, Recreation Fees of the Code," with a second reading in public hearing scheduled for March 23rd, 2020.
Can I have a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance 1379?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Kraus, roll call, please.
Councilmember Coordinator?
Yes.
Councilmember Kawati?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Can I have a motion and a second to open to the public for general matters only?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion is carried.
Yes.
I'm sorry, sir. Ms. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. Please give an amendment address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However appropriate, it may be granted additional time under sole discretion of the Council President.
My name is Dominic Zingali, 300 Main Street, Little Falls. Well, these are, would like to give you these to just...
Actually, you have to, you have to give them to the, to the...
To let you know what's going on.
This is administrative.
Apparently, you don't want to see the pictures.
I'd like to hear...
Well, the problem is this, my son was put in a coma by the Little Falls Police Department, was arrested, incarcerated, beaten to death. He's got brain surgery going on right now. And this is the problem that we have in Little Falls. You hire these guys that have no skills, nothing, you just hire them, give them a job, and they don't know what they're doing. So my kid not suffer, you see, you get the hospital records, the kid is in a coma with brain surgery. Now, this is because of the Little Falls Police Department. You've got kids with guns and badges, try to be heroes. There was no reason for this to happen. I'm not saying my kid is an angel, no. But there was no reason to get beaten with metal sticks and all kinds of stuff and put him in the hospital. He's got brain damage. The reports from the hospital there, we're still going to go, we're still going to a neurologist and teeth missing. Who's supposed to pay for this now? The mayor knew the world's gun, that's why he left. Because I spoke to him yesterday and I told him I was coming here tonight, he didn't want to hear it. That's why he booked it. So now, Tommy, look at the pictures, look at the reports, and you tell me what I got to do now.
So, sir, this matter's being handled by the appropriate agency? It's not something for this government, excuse me, sir, sir. This is not something that is appropriate for this governing body to address or comment on? It's being handled by the appropriate agency?
They're not end on any extent.
I appreciate you coming forward, but that's really all that we can...
But, would you like to talk about this after your, your...
Hey, sir, sir, please direct your comments to me.
Well, I wanna see them, if they would like to see their kids beaten up by the police.
Sir, listen, if you don't have anything else to say, you've had your three minutes. This is gonna be handled by the appropriate agencies. I understand...
Which, that would be where? Where's the proper agency?
This is a matter that is, you have a right, sir, to make your comment during general matters. You can make those comments. This is a matter that is, has ramifications for potential litigation issues as far as I'm concerned as a township's, as a township's attorney. And I'm, it's a matter that's being handled in the Township Administration. And it's not gonna be addressed by a Township Council in open form.
So, when is that gonna be handled?
It's being handled by the Township, it's being handled by the Township Administration.
The way you're, you're telling me that you're already aware of what's going on, is that correct? If it's being, by saying it's being handled, that means you already know of the facts. Is that correct? That's what you just said. This matter's being handled by the proper steps. So, that means you're, you're aware of what's going on. Am I right or am I wrong?
This is your time to speak, sir.
You don't wanna hear it? Okay, we got, this is not gonna end here, sir. So, my kid is not gonna be in coma, and he's gonna be invalid for the rest of his life because of the police, you hire these non, people that have no skills, they don't have a job, and they come here and become police, they, little, young kids, give them badge and the guns, and they go run around town and harass the people. That's what this is going, it's all about. If this is what this town is all about, then we got a problem. Yeah, good evening.
Anybody else?
Anybody else wanna come forward?
Louis Fernandez, still at 53 Harrison Street. I don't know what, I haven't read, I've seen some pictures of what this previous gentleman was, and he doesn't look good. I hope an investigation is open, and I hope the truth comes out. That's all I can say. So, I'm not gonna make any statements or any comments until the proper steps have been taken, and hopefully, the truth will come out. Anyway, I don't know if I should make my comments, because the parties that I wanted to address, the mayor and Mr. Scoville, they are not here. So, it's something that happened at the last, at the February 10th meeting. So, maybe I should reserve the other comments, because I don't think you, I think you can, even though you were there, most of you were there, I don't think you'll be, you can answer the questions.
Yeah, that's up to you, sir, if you would wanna hold that.
But if you want it to, I can give it a try.
Councilman Scoville is here at the next meeting?
I'm gonna give it a try, if you don't mind. I can always come back with the same questions at the next meeting. This is in reference to something that happened, like I said, at the meeting on, at the meeting, at the past meeting, on the 10th, February 10th. Actually, something that didn't happen. With reference to the tax appeal payment of $751,875.77 to Erwin and Heinz on behalf of the Tida Properties, the owner of 150 Club Road. I have a few questions. This was, this was a resolution that was passed and approved by all of you, the mayor and Mr. Scoville, well, on the date that I mentioned before. There was a resolution where $800,000 were bonded. My questions are these. What is the impact of this huge tax-free fund on the taxpayers of Little Falls? That was question number one. Number two, how is this tax property refund going to affect the township's budget going, moving forward? Number three, question number three. Tida Property currently pays approximately $1.00 million in property taxes. As a result of the tax appeal, will, will there be a reduction in the future property taxes that the building located at 150 Club Road will be paying in? And if so, what amount? Question number four, when the tax appeal was on the council's February 10th agenda as Resolution B, why didn't, why did it pass without any discussion or explanation by the mayor and the council members for the public record? After, after all, don't you elected officials have the moral, ethical, and legal obligation to keep the taxpayers informed? Question number three, uh, five, I'm sorry. With respect to the potential impact of the Tida tax appeal payment, Mayor Damiano previously stated that the Jackson Park allocation of $370,000 resulted in an increase in property tax, tax bills. So, what will be the impact of $751,875.77 tax appeal payment on the future property tax bill? Is there a projected dollar amount increase? And number six, why, why the extra $50,000? $800,000 were bonded only, the payment was 751. So, there's a $50,000 difference. Why?
Well, if you've got more, you don't have to start from the beginning, because I'm not as smart as Council President Scoville.
All right, hold on a minute. I didn't say I was finished.
So...
Wait, 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 Mr. Fernando.
Oh, you're still going. I'm sorry.
If, if you look, if you look at today's resolution, what it tells you, the homeowner, the block and number, it's actually, it tells you the tax in year quarter, the block and lot number, taxpayer location, the payee, the reason, and the amount. Why wasn't this done on February 10th? And they tried to sneak it in through the back door. There was nothing. Nothing, absolutely nothing. So, are we hiding something? Isn't the public supposed to be aware of all this that is happening? Are you supposed to keep the public informed as public officials? Now, I'm done.
Why, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Cucci, could you...
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. You could, you could, are you, I'll try to make it as short as I possibly can.
You stand up, and he has eight points. I'm teasing, Mr. Fernandez, please.
All right, go ahead.
So, Mr. Fernandez, this tax appeal is a result of a state tax judgment law case. It is not the normal tax appeal that you see on the regular resolutions, which is a result, the refunds, which are results of overpayments. So, these are handled quite a bit differently. As you saw in the mayor's presentation for the budget, this has had no impact on the budget for 2020. What you did see, what he presented to you, was the reduction in the assessed values from 2019 to 2020. That's, that's the impact on the assessed values. But there is no impact on the budget, because the taxes remain the same. They did not go up as a result of this. The reason that there is more money involved in the resolution than was actually paid to the taxpayer refund is because in these situations, we are required to go to the local finance board at the state and present our case to them, so that we are allowed to spread the refunding of that money back to the, to the taxpayers over a number of years. So, that requires professionals. So, that other $50,000 is to, is for bond counsel and auditors and financial advisors and all the rest of that, to make the presentation at the local finance board. And once we get that, which hasn't happened yet, that's gonna happen hopefully in March or April. Once we get that, then we'll know what their plan is for us, and we'll institute that plan on how we replace that $750,000.
All right, but you're still having to answer all the questions.
Okay, which did I miss?
You said that it will have no impact.
It has no impact. You saw the, you saw the mayor's presentation.
A little skeptical, but, so, and this is the part that I don't understand. My major wasn't financing, but I'll tell you this. I know, as a homeowner, that I have a budget. And if the budget of the township is, let's say, $16 million, which is basically what it is, sixteen, around there, $16 million, if somebody doesn't pay what it was scheduled to pay, if there's a shortage, or a refund, or whatever you wanna call it, somebody has to make up those money.
So, you, you saw the mayor's presentation, right?
Yeah.
Okay, you saw the piece where he said, we have a $950,000 reserve for uncollected taxes, that particular...
So, you're gonna take it off the, the...
That's why we, that's why we have, I understand that your, your background is in finance, but is it in government? Okay, so, in government, we build reserves for unexpected items. And one of those items that we build reserves for is through that item called Reserve for Uncollected Taxes, and it's specifically for paying taxes back when we have these appeals.
So, one way or the other, the taxpayer pays for it, because...
Mr. Fernandez, you know that there is no government money. There's only taxpayer money.
Okay, that's what, so, we're paying, also, what will the new amount that this group, the people that, I forgot their name, Tida Group, I believe?
I, I don't, I don't have it in front of me, but I think, I think it's about 40 million is the assessment.
No, no, no. The new tax...
How much will the tax, the new tax bill, they're going from...
1.53 something.
Yeah, and what was the, do you recall, you said, do you have it? I see you have papers. Do you have the assessment?
No, I don't have the assessment, no.
You sure? If you have the...
The $750,000 was, was the refund.
Right.
My research indicates that in the previous years, they pay about 1.53...
Right, but that's based on an assessment. Their assessment's gonna come down.
I don't have the new assessment.
The, the assessment's gonna come down to just under 40 million. I think they were paying 45 or so. So, their assessment's gonna come down some, some millions of dollars.
Millions of dollars?
Mm-hmm.
So, that...
Their assessment.
Their assessment.
Their assessment.
Their assessment.
Which is different than the actual taxes paid.
But you have to multiply the assessment by the tax rate.
Right, of course.
Right.
And, and that will give you the, but, even though, when he's, you know, a few millions of dollars, he's, he's a huge amount, regardless of, you know, the tax rate.
I think we'll try to get you that answer.
Yeah, can you get me that answer, if you don't mind? I know what the assessment was last year, what, not the assessment, I'm sorry.
You know what the taxes were.
Tax bill.
I'll, I'll get the, I'll get the assessment for you.
For the future.
And the, and the taxes, okay.
All right. All right, that was my question. I just, you know, when I got home, I just looked at these thing, these papers, and I kicked myself for not asking those questions last week. But I was in pain, and I couldn't think straight. But, not that I ever think straight, but once in a while I do. But I, it just, it's, I couldn't understand why nobody made a comment.
So, Mr. Fernandez, I'm not sure what comment you would like us to make. Would I have liked the tax appeal...
Well, sometimes you ask...
Excuse me. Would I have liked the tax appeal to go differently? Absolutely. But it didn't, then it's out of our hands, and then we have to move forward and, and do what we need to do to satisfy that appeal. So, beyond, you know, I'm supportive of how we tried to fight that appeal. We fought it over, I don't know how many years.
Three and a half.
And I believe it was an issue inherited by this local governing body.
Yes, it started in the prior...
It was something we inherited, wasn't something of our doing. So, then we had to address it. We were, we were sued, it was a tax appeal. So, beyond every one of us getting up and saying, wow, that is really horrible that we're not gonna get those, we then move on and figure out how do we go forward, and how do we be as fiscally responsible as we possibly can? We have a very transparent budget process. I'm very pleased with the budget presentation of tonight, and the fact that our municipal taxes will, will be flat. So, I'm not sure what else we could possibly do.
Okay, let me, I'll, if you don't mind me, I'll, can I answer that question?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Can I answer that question?
Sure.
First of all, that $750,875 refund to this group, what year is that for?
It's from 16, 16 through 19.
16 through 19.
No, 16 through 18. 16 through 18.
So, it was 16, 17, and 18?
Yes.
So, I'm sure they have another appeal in the works for...
No, when you, Joe, the counselor can tell you that part of the law.
So, what ends up happening is there's something called a tax freeze that then gets put in place. But this is, as, as the councilwoman said, this is an appeal which results, which resulted in a judgment at the tax court, and then was appealed to the appellate division, so, and that was the denial at that level. So, this goes back several years, as indicated that it actually, when you, when you file the appeal, you're filing the appeal from the prior year. So, I think it goes back further than 16, but, but I think it goes back to 15. But once the decision has been entered by the court, there is a period of time when the taxpayer can no longer make the, make another application, because they basically have succeeded in reducing the assessment.
All right, now, going back to you. Most of us, they, most of you, I should say, and most of us too, we ask for a clarification when we don't understand something. And I've seen you doing it, doing it quite a few times, and you and you, both of you, they ask questions when, how come nobody said a thing?
Because I wasn't confused. So, if I understood, I mean, that's why, that's part of our job as an elected official. So, I understood the process. I understood this has been going on for a period of years. I actually understood when this first came up, even before I was elected, that there were, that there was an issue with this particular building. So, I had no questions, because I understood the process, and I understood that our, our council, our, our tax council, our mayor, and, and our business administrator did their jobs. So, there'd be no point in asking a question. Of course, if you didn't understand something, and like you're asking it now, that's what this forum is for. So, I, you know, I'm not sure why you're upset that we understood what was going on.
I'm upset because, I'll tell you why I'm upset, because you knew for years, so you were prepared for it. That's what you just said.
No, I knew there was an issue.
Way, way back, that was being taken care of, way, way back, that's what you said. So, you knew it for a few years. The part that I don't understand is why you knew it for years, you, I'm sure you all knew it for a long time, but the public, the taxpayers, didn't know that this appeal was coming, and that such a huge refund was coming out of their pockets, because whether the money, the money comes out of...
Mr. Fernandez, we don't, we don't comment on litigation. I mean, that's just a matter of fact. When we talk to the council on litigation, we do it in executive session. It's not a public matter until it's settled.
He's just, he's just, I'm just mesmerized. I'm just mesmerized, because, like, like you said, a public elected official should keep the electorate, the taxpayers, informed, and you have, period. You can argue all you want, but you have not.
Mr. Fernandez, you're holding the information in your hand.
Yeah.
And telling us that we didn't inform you.
That's what...
About the information that you're holding in your hand.
Mm-hmm.
That you got from us.
When we legally could give you that information.
Right, at the only point where we could legally give it to you.
Okay, you have your...
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Baggett?
Good evening again. Andrew Baggett, 78 Franklin Road, Denville. I'm sorry to hear of this incident in town. I will be praying for all those that are involved.
That's very kind of you, Mr. Baggett.
Concerning this, eventually, it comes back to the taxpayer, this rebate that was $750,000. Eventually, it's gonna come back to the taxpayers. I find it hard to believe that we won't get a raise this year, but eventually, it's coming. I have a, Mr. Quadi, you mentioned your cleanup. Could you just elaborate on that and the date again? Is that, is that something people can put stuff out at the curb extra, or drop it off at the recycle center extra, or is there litter day like last fall?
It's, it's more of a litter cleanup. It's more where we ask for volunteers to come out, and we send them out with grabbers and bags, and, and ask them to go out and pick up litter. You've participated, so you know the routine. I, I did say that it is a tentative date, because I actually haven't discussed that date with the rest of the council members until just now. And if there is a conflict that I'm unaware of, of other events that are going on in Um, and if there is a conflict that I'm unaware of, of other events that are going on in town, we may change it. But no matter, there will be a town cleanup sometime this spring where we will ask for volunteers to come to the civic center, we will hand out vests and, and assign locations, and just as a community day, ask for people to sort of help make the town a cleaner place to live in.
Thank you. Uh, I had a few questions for the mayor, but obviously, uh, he's not here. Hope his family's doing better. A couple things regarding the minutes. The minutes for the November 18th and the, and December 16th minutes are not posted online.
November 18th?
And December 16th. I believe the December 4th or 2nd meeting was postponed for snow, if I'm correct.
One meeting was postponed for snow. Um, I think there was...
But there is a January meeting that's posted after that, so there's two that aren't...
Yeah, so there was a December meeting that was, that was canceled because of the snow, and the 2nd December meeting, we actually forgot to approve it, so we did approve it here tonight, so it will be posted.
How about the November 18th meeting? That one is not...
I thought we sent it to the webmaster, but I will double check to make sure that he received it.
Uh, and when you talk to that gentleman, the, um, minutes for the year of 2015 and 2016 are not in any chronological order. And could we get that arranged so that they are...
I'll have him second to that.
Indeed, if you, if you see it, it may, it just, uh, makes it a little confusing to, to follow through on it and, uh, everything else. I had some questions for the mayor, but, uh, I guess we're off the hook and we can get out of here a few minutes earlier maybe, but, uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Quadi.
Mr. Baggett, thank you for volunteering with the cleanup.
Let me know when it is and try to help you out.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Reverend Kostrowski, 179th Drive. Um, this is basically from Mr. Kucha. Uh, the bag that's across the street from my house is still there.
The, I'm sorry, say it again?
The bag that they left from construction.